Thank you. Want to welcome everyone here. And please note, Mr. Delagarge is absent this evening. The rest of the council is present. Want to welcome everyone to our November 21st meeting. And see, we have some scouts join us. That's awesome. Glad to see you here. The first item on our agenda is items from council. And I have a list, but anybody else want to go first or wait? Or? Yes, ma'am?
I have one. I think on the capital improvements, we're going to be looking at redoing Crestwood, rebuilding it completely. And I'd like to have staff bring us a report and have council consider the cost of concrete versus hot mix with asphalt base. And I'd also like to consider making the sidewalks be wider and perhaps narrowing the lanes to look at connecting Crestwood to some of our other sidewalks for recreational use. And at the time of develop or design, I think is the time to do that. So I'd like to see that.
Sounds good. We can bring that alternative forward with some estimates?
Absolutely.
I'd especially like to consider the long-term cost of the hot mix with asphalt base when you factor in concrete. I've been driving around the city and I'd like to encourage everyone to do the same. I've been looking at our concrete streets and they don't have black lines through them from the crack seal and they don't have the pothole problems. And when you start looking at the cost of the maintenance as well, it's really making me start to wonder whether we should be a little more proactive about that.
It's always, it's, history repeats itself. That conversation has taken place, but it needs to take place again about which is better long-term. You're absolutely right, so.
I have a question. Because Crestwood is such an old street, we're going to have to do the sewer lines, everything?
That's planned.
Okay.
The utility works planned.
Can we make sure it doesn't take as long as Red River?
No promises.
My brother said he'd come back and redo it. I mean, because he did Sam Houston. So he was asking, how come it's taking so long for Red River to come?
I think, and that brings to mind, it's the moisture in the street, the rain. We had to wait for it to cause some of the problems for Red River.
It did.
Okay, yeah.
On the rain and drying out the soles.
What is the ETA on that section of Red River?
Springtime?
Estimate.
Spring.
Spring 2018?
Oh, and I was hoping it was going to be Christmas.
You know, it'll, I appreciate everybody being patient with us. Do you remember Sam Houston? I remember looking at that intersection of Mockenburg and Sam Houston. Oh, my gosh, one lane each direction. It was a nightmare, but look at it now. So for many, many years, it's, it'll serve as well, so we'll get there. I have a couple of items, just real quick. C4 and C5, we want to read together. Staff has asked. Those are both the bond issuing. And then we have some people from our bond company here, RBC, to talk to us. Few other things, just wanted to share with council, the Long-Term Recovery Group, which I didn't know she was coming. One of the members is here. The VOAD funds or the, it was a GoFundMe account that we had set up, did collect, oh, $6,000 or $7,000. And we'd like to, the county's doing the same thing, is give that to the Long-Term Recovery Group. It's private dollars. And United Way is the fiscal agent for that group. So that money, they have caseworkers and they'll vet those situations and it's used for those unmet needs. So that's where that-
I talked to Dolly earlier, you know, quite a bit, so I'll begin involved with that.
Okay. And it's a great, yeah, you were there this morning when I mentioned, if you have someone who's just in a desperate situation and doesn't qualify anywhere, that group has private money to help someone out. And they have been a blessing to me. I know I've sent a few people over there, so I'll make sure you reach out to them. We also tonight, there's some folks from FEMA here, and they're not on the agenda, but they're going to speak under Citizens Communication. There's a whole row of them in the back, I noticed when I came in. They just want to provide an update.
Can I pull D3 and D4, just for minor clarification?
Absolutely. So D3 and D4. Those are off the consent agenda. Just as a reminder, I've gotten some questions about the DPS office is still closed. They have a site and they're, they're wiring it and getting furniture and working on it right now. I don't want to say where it's at, because I don't want people to go over there yet, but they're close to being open. That's what, the exact words, they're very close, so to reopening. I know Tanner has someone to recognize. At what point do we want to do that?
It's your privilege. He's ready, it's your, whenever.
Okay, hold on one thing. Real quick, on MLK Boulevard, that discussion came up by a resident. I would like you guys to think about, I'd like to get a couple council members to sit down and over the next few months, work on that and go through the alternatives. So y'all think about it and maybe at the next meeting, if one of you feels strongly about being on it. I have some ideas about who I'd like to get to be on that, but I just, y'all think about it. I think we should take a serious look at the MLK Boulevard question about what our options are and do all the research. And staff can help with that.
I can be on that committee if you want me to.
You'd like to do it, okay. Well, let's, let's try to remember at the next meeting to make that decision and get a couple people together and, you know, and give y'all time to come back with recommendations for the full council. And I wouldn't, and just me speaking, I wouldn't expect some recommendation until January or something. We got the holidays and, okay. I think that's everything. Now, Chief Drake, you want to come up and you have some recognition for us, for someone special. He looks pretty sharp, so I kind of figured I knew who it was for.
Yeah, he does look sharp. Thank you first, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Garrett, and members of council for giving me a few minutes to acknowledge one of our employees, Captain Emilio Reyes, who recently completed a managing, the managing officer program from the National Fire Academy. And it's a very exclusive program to get into. I'll tell you just a little bit about it. It's a multi-year curriculum that introduces emergency, emerging service leaders and professional skills and change in the change management, look at risk reduction, adaptive leadership. The curriculum assists the candidate in building a foundation for their future management and technical competencies. And just learning how to address interpersonal relationships in the fire service and recognizing the cultural sensitivity that we have today in all that we do. And then professional ethics and outcome-based performance. It consists of five prerequisite courses that have to be completed, and then he has to actually go to Edmondsburg, Maryland, to complete the other four. So it gives me a lot of great pleasure to recognize him as, when we look at the future leadership of our, senior leadership of our department, you're looking at him right here. This guy's a go-getter. What he's accomplished in his first 10 years in our, in our business is pretty incredible. He's really got the ear of the department. They look for him, for guidance, and he steps up and he's a first-class act in all that he does. And so it's certainly my honor to be able to acknowledge him today for completing that program. And I took the liberty of having a certificate framed, so I'd like to present that to him, if y'all can give me just that.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to acknowledge his wife Valerie and his daughter Riley, that were able to make it to be a part of this as well, so they might like to come up too.
Can I say something?
Sure, yeah.
I just want to say that I've known Emilio since he was about 11 years old, and I'm so proud of what he's accomplished. He worked in my office as a student back then, and it's wonderful to see what he's accomplished.
That made him smile, I can tell. It's hard to make him smile at times.
I'm wondering why they're mad at it in red.
Yeah, turn around so we can see.
I'm wondering why they're mad at it in red.
Oh, yeah, that's nice. That's nice. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Emilio. Well deserved.
Always.
I just, you know, thank y'all, especially to my wife and my daughter. They've spent a lot of time by themselves for me to be able to accomplish this. And I met a lot of great people and the network experience that's up at the National Fire Academy is, it's just an unreal experience being up there. So I hope that many of the other guys take the opportunities that the National Fire Academy offers for them to go and better educate themselves and really see what's up to the up and up in the fire service and know that, hey, not all the problems that are here are just particularly here. They're everywhere. Everybody has to figure out their budget. Everybody has to figure out how to get that money and how to spend the dollars the best that they can. So thank y'all. Appreciate all the support over the years. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Is there anything else under items from council before we go on? Yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and move into Citizens Communication, so that's the time. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak about any item at all, just please limit your remarks to five minutes or less as a courtesy to everyone else. We just need your name. We know who you are, sir, but-
My name's Mark Lofgren. I live at 116 Wiltshire. There's a public benefit that I believe the city and the city council could enact, which wouldn't cost them any money and very little time. When Channel 15 was started, they approached the county and they approached VISD about putting their meetings on TV. And it was $50,000. And VISD decided they'd rather have a teacher than pay $50,000. Now, this is when the channel started and it's up and running. And it wouldn't take much now, except a disc of those meetings handed to the communications person and aired on 15. There's very little time and cost involved, and it would be a benefit to all the citizens. I mean, or county residents, although sometimes I think the county overlooks that. And we all pay VISD taxes. It would be a benefit to be on Channel 15. So please, think about it. Push it. I know board members on VISD that would- Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for council, there's always been a standing offer to allow those governmental entities to have programming on Channel 15.
I don't know that they really want it to be televised.
And I tried, I don't know the price, but I have tried very hard. I've twisted some arms. I gave up, so, but they, I appreciate your remarks.
There's a standing offer.
Very, very good remarks. Citizens Communication still open for anyone else that'd like to come on up? Yes, sir.
To the mayor, to the city council? I'm speaking on behalf of my father, okay? My father's a senior citizen. He's 81 years old. He'll be 81 in January. My mother is 74. And they're on a very fixed income. They only, they, no retirement. My dad was a farmer all his life and it just, there's just no retirement in that. He was in a landowner. But he's, they're both collecting social security and they only get $1,300 a month. Now, I want to say something. Imagine if your parents get, they get $1,300 a month to pay all their bills, groceries and whatnot. And then on top of that, you have to pay an additional $130 something dollars. Now, what I'm going with is, may I, can somebody approach the city council, please? I mean, can you? I'd like to exhibit something to y'all if my family. There is a piece of paper here.
The officer, and he'll share it.
Thank you, sir. There is a piece of paper there. I'd like for everybody to see it, if y'all may. That's, that, being senior citizens, I did not know, I know that everybody has to pay school taxes, you know, and I, we understand that. But coming from senior citizens that only make $1,300 a month, that's combined between both of them, and they have to pay a junior college tax. So I looked at that today. I just looked at that. I saw that on there. I was like, really? So what, I mean, will this continue happening to happen? Can it be changed just for senior citizens? For all senior citizens? For people that are on a fixed income? That's my question to the city council.
Let me, I could try to answer very briefly. Are you, with respect to the junior college, is that your question?
Yes, sir.
You're curious as to why?
Well, see, and also, my dad, my dad put two people, I didn't go to, I didn't go to college and I got, had another brother that didn't go to college, but I got a younger brother went to Texas A&amp;M, he's an engineer. And my sister went to college and she went to U of H and she's a bilingual education teacher in Houston. Now, I work in the oil field and I'm paying for it now. I wish I would have went to college. But yes, I mean, my dad put two children to college and they feel like they're still putting people to college.
Yeah, I can comment, and I'm certainly not arguing with you, sir. You know, the prevailing thought is paying the taxes to like the school district and the colleges, it benefits the whole community. That's, you know, that's just me saying that. I'm not speaking for council. It's a prevailing thought.
Stick to factual response.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Attorney's reminded me, I have to limit what I can say. You may just avail yourself of the homestead exemption, and if they own a home, he's obviously over 65, it freezes the value, so they pay less taxes. I'm sure, I don't know, I didn't look at your document there, Ms. Lee, I don't know if you can tell. Do you have the homestead exemption?
Yes, we do. Yes, they do.
But we have to limit our remarks because your item's not on the agenda, so. I cannot answer the question about exactly why you pay those taxes, other than the way I've explained it. Is that-
But we don't control the junior-
And we also do not control the junior college. I mean, you may want, they have a board you can address and talk to.
I mean, actually, do all senior citizens, what about the senior citizens that only make 700? There's some senior citizens that only bring home 500. And the city of Victoria is going to take money from them? I mean, where's the compassion at? Where's the compassion of the city of Victoria? Where's the compassion of the city council? That's all I got to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, did, do you want the name, did you, your name, sir, for the record?
Yes, my name's Richard Gomez. My dad is Jesus Gomez.
Okay. Richard, thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank y'all very much.
So Citizens Communication's still open? If anyone else would like to come forward? I know we have the FEMA folks. Okay.
Mayor, city council, and city manager, Thomas Rickman-Brier, emergency manager, 205 Bridge Street in the basement. How's that? One of the first voices I heard from FEMA shortly after Hurricane Harvey was a very calming voice by a lady named Faye Cooley, who's standing right here behind me. She is a disaster survivor assistance program minister. They go out and actually hit the boots on the ground, do the interviews with folks to get them registered into the individual assistance program. Late last week, Faye came to our office, did a presentation to us on numbers on the impact they had here in Victoria and also in Victoria County. And so we were a little late on the draw, but we were able to get her in here to get her approved, to carry them in tonight to talk about the impact they had and what they actually saw out in our community and how they were able to assist us in registering folks into the individual assistance program. So she's going to make it as close she can to, it's five minutes, but she's got some graphics to show. And then if there's any questions or anything like that, we can try to answer them, so.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for letting us have this opportunity to speak with you this evening and show you what we've done. Also, I always like to thank folks such as yourself that give us the opportunity to come into your county and your city and work with your individuals to get them registered and that sort of thing that FEMA does to help when a disaster occurs. For the record, I am Faye Cooley, and I'm with Disaster Survivor Assistance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, supporting Victoria County. Get my glasses on here. The graphic I have up on the wall is a outline basically of the impacted areas in the city of Victoria. It takes four applications in a grid. This is the US Grid Service, the little squares. It takes four of them to turn at the lightest color, yellow, and the more applications that are made in that particular grid at those addresses, it turns darker and darker. You can see that we have heavily impacted areas, y'all well know, in Victoria. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. In the Greens Edition area, which was highly flooded and, you know, a lot of folks suffered there, we had major impact there of our folks. All the little bitty circles, and they're really hard to see on the screen, but that denotes an interaction with a person who we spoke with. Overall, my team and I, which was about 26 of us, coming and going throughout the disaster, had over 12,000 interactions with the citizens, and this is for the entire county. But you can see with the impacted area, a lot of that time was spent in the city of Victoria itself. When we came into the county, there was a little over 12,000 applications and it's now almost 20,000. My staff and I, mostly my staff, was able to do almost 500 registrations. Those were done at the door or on a car, the hood of a car, or if it was hot, sitting in there. We went to a lot of the fire departments in the county areas and supported those folks to get them registered because there was no power and there was no internet access and we had that, so we did that. We also have the ability to do updates and inquiries for people with regard to their application, you know, where is it at? What can we do to help you move forward? And we did over 550 of those, again, at the door, on the hood of a car, in the car, you know, wherever. Just to tell you a little bit about the grid system, once we would meet a person, we would tap on the screen. When it says, "Collect here," we would put our information in where we had a survivor interaction, whether we talked to them, whether we did an update or inquiry. And each one of those would be denoted with one of the little bitty circles that you see. And they're not all there, not all 12,000 of them are there. Our system is way overloaded with all the disasters that are occurring, so it takes a long time for it to populate, but that was about the best we could do. We went to, at Rick's request and approval, we went to the major employers, the school systems, the two or three hospital services. I know Ditar and Citizens Medical. Spoke with them about getting the information out. We gave them electronic flyers such as this, an electronic version, Spanish on one side, English on the other, telling people to register. I do have to admit that every one of them seemed to really have that handle on helping their employees and those that were impacted, so we were glad to hear about that. As we go forward, we're going to be leaving, our last day in the field here will be December the 6th. Up until that time, we will continue to support the Disaster Recovery Center, which we have done quite a bit, to help them with the overpopulation of folks sitting in line waiting to see someone, and we would come in and help those folks to alleviate some of that. We'll also be touching base with some community-based organizations, just reaching back to them and saying, you know, we're going to remind you that November the 30th is the last day to register. Would you please put another flyer up if it's gotten taken down? And give them the Disaster Recovery Center's location and hours of operation. We'll also be doing that with faith-based organizations, as well as, we look for high foot traffic in private sector, you know, business locations and try to reach out to those folks and get them to talk to the people coming in. And went to hairdressers the other day and said, you know, I know people talk about their problems and, you know, what they need to do. So, you know, try to get to those areas where folks are talking and let them know that the deadline's coming up and that they need to get settled with that. You know, I believe that basically is all of it. We did do quite a bit of home visits in the county, several of them here in the city, working with some elderly and disabled folks, and that's one of the things that I enjoy most about what I do. So again, thank you all for inviting us into your county and letting, and city, and letting us take care of folks that needed assistance.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
May we be excused? Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, you can go anytime. You don't have to stay for the meeting. All right. Best of luck. So Citizens Communication's still open? If there's anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close Citizens Communication. We'll move into the rest of our agenda. And we have a couple of items with public hearings.
The first is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victoria, Texas, related to the disaster declaration issued by Mayor Paul Polosik on August 24th, 2017, in response to Hurricane Harvey partially waiving certain development standards to allow temporary manufactured housing units on property with damage caused by Hurricane Harvey, declaring an emergency, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to speak to that item, now would be the time. Come on up.
Dolly Stokes, Victoria County United Way. I first want to thank you for the money from GoFundMe. We don't have it yet. We know we're getting it soon, and I can promise you it will be put to good use by the Victoria County Long-Term Recovery Group. Josephine's working with me, and we welcome anyone else who wants to help on the Long-Term Recovery Group. Jan has some good ideas as well, so we welcome that and we need it. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the public hearing agenda item. We're really glad to see the city council working to look at waiving some of the requirements. I won't get into any minutia. I will tell you only that there are people who could benefit from having an RV at their home, because there are people in the city that need that. There are many more people outside the city limits, which is good for this body, but there are some in the city, so I appreciate that consideration.
Thank you. And for all you're doing on the Long-Term Recovery Group, can't thank you enough for that. Okay, if no one else wants to speak on C1, we'll close that public hearing and entertain a motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I have a question. Okay, this just pertains to RVs, it doesn't pertain to manufactured homes.
And that's correct.
Okay, and you can have them, you're talking about both commercial RV parks and the homeowner park, I mean, if you, they want to put it in their house.
Yes, you could put it on your lot, provided the conditions that are outlined in the ordinance are met.
Okay, that's what I would-
Currently, and Julie, you may have to help me, currently you can only have an RV on your lot that you're staying in for two weeks. And so this, this eliminates the two-week restriction, and they can do it as long as they have an active building permit.
Okay, now, these RVs, are they going to be personal or did I see that they're going to be from FEMA?
Either one.
Okay. So the FEMA ones, once they finish the 18 months, are they going back to FEMA or are they going to stay in the parking lot?
No, they go back to FEMA.
They go back to FEMA?
FEMA owns the RV.
Okay.
According to the agreement with FEMA, it states that it'll go back after the 18 months.
Okay. I saw some trailers the other day. I was at the parking, I think either at Sam's or something, and I counted 19 of them. Did they come to us or were they just passing through town?
We only know of one trailer that, that is in town, so I'm not sure.
I thought it was two.
Well, there's an RV. Is there an RV and a manufactured home?
We have an RV and then a manufactured home that will be moving to a park. Now, we are getting a lot of permit requests for people that received benefits, monetary benefits from FEMA, and then have taken those benefits and purchased new manufactured homes to redevelop their lots, in case, you know, they had a previous manufactured home that was destroyed. And so we, we've been getting a lot of calls about their FEMA manufactured homes, but technically, they actually received the monetary benefits and then went and took their benefits to provide themselves with permanent housing.
I was just wondering if maybe they were somewhere parked and I didn't see them, because we tried to follow them, but I lost them.
I just had a couple of questions for clarification. Part of the ordinance says that there has to be a minimum of a 10-foot space between the recreational vehicle and any structure, and a minimum of a 5-foot space between recreational vehicle and any property line. And I just wanted to make sure, I mean, you're talking about 10 feet of separation, not saying it's, anyway, just 10 feet of separation. And that the RV is completely within the lot. It's not hanging at the end of the driveway and blocking the sidewalk. It's completely within the lot. I just wanted to make sure.
So that word "space" is a little problematic, I guess.
Well, the original ordinance was written to have, you know, keep people from living in a travel trailer or recreational vehicle, but it allowed for enough time so Uncle Charlie could come for Christmas. And, but under the circumstances to be able to extend that, if you had a perfectly good travel trailer or RV of any kind, why couldn't you use that while your house is being repaired? Does make very good sense.
FEMA has reserved some, at some RV lot, not lots, trailer parks, mobile home parks, they have some reserved, right? And we encourage people to use those, because they're more suitable for that type of, with all the hookups, as opposed to their, on their personal home site, but if need be. So this gives you the flexibility to handle them quickly and not be an impediment to placing those. That's a good thing.
It'd be very hard to fit manufactured homes on a lot of the lots that have the damaged properties. There just are.
Yeah.
Not a lot of lot, our lots are large enough to accommodate two manufactured homes on them and be contained within the property.
I just wanted to, uh, encourage the media and the public who's watching this that there's a little bit more to the ordinance than what we've talked about. And so, uh, if they have need of this situation, they make sure that they check the entire ordinance so that they don't go and file an application that gets denied.
Understood. Coming from a, someone who was on planning commission, how long? Six years, nine years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Are you kidding? Was it really that long?
It was fifteen.
Oh, God. Okay.
I loved every minute.
Okay, that's amazing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it. C-two.
C-two is an ordinance amending section ten dash forty-one related to nuisances to exempt certain mowing requirements for citizens whose property abut an extraordinarily wide right-of-way, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C-two. If anyone would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
A move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everyone should be familiar with this issue. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when you're talking in, in part A, three A, it's talking about more than thirty feet. So, are you telling me that, okay, I've got a hundred and twenty feet? Am I responsible for thirty feet or am I not responsible for any of it?
Julie and I are looking at each other trying to decide who's going to answer the question. I'll take it and she can jump in and help me out, all right? The hundred and twenty foot that you just described applies only if we're talking about a lot that is over five acres.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that is one situation. Most of what this applies to is not the five-acre portion. It's the portion of the public right-of-way between the property line and the curb. Our current ordinance requires the property owner to mow that, and this creates an exception if that area of city-owned right-of-way is more than thirty feet wide.
So, I'm not responsible for nothing? The city's going to take care of the whole thirty feet?
The city would take care of the thirty feet.
Okay.
And then the property owner's responsible for what is behind the, the thirty foot? From their, essentially from their property line.
So, you're talking about, okay, this is a street. I'm going to go thirty feet in, and that's all the city's going to take care of? If there's some footage between there, not, not a fence, but there's still some space, then I'm responsible for it?
Let me, let me rephrase that a little bit. If the city's right-of-way is greater than thirty feet, the city will take care of the city's right-of-way. So, if we're talking about a forty-five-foot city right-of-way, it would be more than thirty feet. It would be the part that the city owns we would take care of. Whereas if it's less than thirty feet, the citizen is responsible for taking care of it.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it. C-three.
C-three is an ordinance amending the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget of the City of Victoria in carrying forward encumbrances outstanding as, as of September thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, declaring an emergency, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C-three. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C-three and entertain a motion.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we do this every year. Are there any questions?
Here to address questions.
Okay, seeing.
I just have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the general fund, on WW Services, is that just the balance of the contract? That's not, because we pay him on an S-mowing basis, right?
Yes.
So, this would be the balance of the contract that we're carrying forward?
The balance as of nine-thirty, correct.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay. No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it. So, we'll do C-four and five together? You want to read them both first?
I'll read them both, and we'll do a single public hearing for both. We can discuss them together, but then we'll vote on them individually. We'll take a motion and second individually on them, um, just to make sure we're clear about who's voting for what. Um, C-four is an ordinance that reads, "To discuss and approve an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Victoria, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Victoria, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series twenty-seventeen, approving and authorizing an official statement and the distribution thereof, a purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and a paying agent registrar agreement, approving and authorizing all other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to the mayor or the city manager to select outstanding bonds to be refunded and approve all final terms of the bonds, and providing for an immediate effective date." And then item C-five is to discuss and approve an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Victoria, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Victoria, Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series twenty-seventeen, approving and authorizing an official statement and the distribution thereof, an escrow agreement, and a paying agent registrar agreement, approving and authorizing all other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to the mayor and/or the city manager to select the outstanding bonds to be refunded and to approve all final terms of the bonds, and providing for an immediate effective date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C-four and five. If anybody has any remarks, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing and, um, we will, um, entertain a motion on C-four first.
Make a motion to approve item C-four.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Discussion?
Yes.
Questions?
And actually, Dusty with RBC and Noel with McCall are both here. Uh, Dusty laid a, uh, presentation in front of you. He'll actually go through it. It'll be kind of in a reverse order, the utility system refunding first, uh, and then he'll talk about the geo-refunding. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dusty and.
Okay.
And give you a, a brief overview of both.
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. Again, for the record, my name is Dusty Trailer, Managing Director with RBC Capital Markets. It's always good to be in the city of Victoria. As Andrew, as Andrew said, that we are going to do the presentation on these, on these two items. Uh, we're going to do the, the latter one first and then, and then come back. We'll address the, the utility system revenue bond first. You've got a packet in front of you that contains two sections. The first section of that, of that packet contains the utility system refunding results and analysis. And then the second, um, section contains a estimated savings structure from potentially refinancing some of the city's geo, uh, bonds, specifically the Series two thousand nine B BABS.
Dusty, can I interrupt you just one second?
Absolutely.
Council members I'm noticing are grabbing different documents. Some are grabbing a full-color handout and some are.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, what he's talking about is a full-color bound.
Full, full-color handout.
Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Got it? Ready? All right. So, a- as you know, we, we came to council in September to receive authorization to move forward with the refinancing of the utility system revenue bonds. Uh, since that time, we've been working to move forward, uh, to go into the market to refinance those, to refinance those bonds. Originally, the council authority, uh, that, that was granted at that time with a parameter resolution, granted the authority to move forward with the refinancing that would not have exceeded ten million dollars. Um, and for a, and for a couple of reasons. One, being market conditions, and two, the recently, um, not enacted at this time, but pro- proposed tax reform legislation that has come out of both the U.S. House of Representatives and the U.S. Senate, uh, that has some provisions in it that would eliminate, uh, a municipality, the city of Victoria in this case, your authority to issue tax-exempt advanced refinancing bonds. And that, as it's presently drafted, uh, has an effective date of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. So, as, as that, uh, and, and I'm practicing law in front of at least two attorneys, if not more. And Noel is here with McCall Parkhurst and Horton, and he will definitely jump in on me when I misspeak. Um, a- as enacted. So, the punchline of that is, um, at the end of this calendar year, if this legislation is passed, uh, and it is contained, these provisions are contained in both drafts of the bill, we'd no longer be able to do tax-exempt advanced refinancings. And, and we got to looking a little bit deeper into the, the city's utility system, uh, bond portfolio. And there were a few more maturities that we felt like made sense to, to grab, to enhance the, the savings on the utility system refinancing bond. And we said, "Well, i- if that's the case, let's go ahead and get them now, um, while we have this opportunity in the ca- in the event that this legislation passes and we can no longer do it tax-exempt advanced refinancing bonds." So, for that reason, uh, if you'll look, the, the utility system refinancing bond has grown from what was proposed, uh, back in September of about eight million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand. It has grown, uh, and we were in the market yesterday with, uh, refinancing to, uh, potentially refinance seventeen million, four hundred thousand dollars of the city's Series two thousand seven, two thousand ten, and two thousand and fourteen bonds. The punchline really to this, uh, increase in size is that as we were looking at it in September, we were estimating total savings of about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we are on page four inside section one, if you're following along in the book. Um, but, but yesterday in the market on the, on the larger refinancing, we're able to lock in savings that totals one million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars over the remaining life of those bonds. And we think that it is advantageous for the city to go ahead and consider locking in the savings for this, for this refinancing of these, these utility system bonds. And so that is why, uh, the item for the utility system refunding is back on the agenda for tonight. Just it's a, it's a little bit larger than what was originally authorized. And so we need your new authority, uh, to complete this financing prior to the end of the year and get it, get it closed in advance of that legislation. That is our, our basic presentation on the utility system, uh, advanced refunding. I, I would say the, the, some of the same stuff you guys have heard me say for, for years when we get up here and talk about this stuff. I can't say enough about, uh, the professionalism with which the staff of the City of Victoria works toward, um, n- not only accomplishing the, the mission of, of getting in front of the rating agencies and presenting the, the city's credit to those entities, the rating agencies and the, and the underwriters, but also, uh, kind of the expediency with which, uh, we have had to, to, to get everybody up to speed and the expediency with which Andrew and Gilbert specifically have worked to entertain, uh, the idea of potentially increasing the size of this utility system refinancing and also, uh, getting us in position to look at the refinancing of the Series two thousand nine BABS that, that we'll talk about here in a moment.
Well, thank you for those compliments on staff.
Staff's tremendous. You guys are doing tremendous work.
Good to hear, and he's been busy lately, I know. Andrew has.
Still waiting for the punchline here.
No, he has.
Would you like for me to go ahead and kind of roll this into a presentation as it relates to the refinancing on the BABS? And then you guys can come back and take your actions separately?
Discuss them both and then we'll vote separately, yeah. Go right ahead.
And this is the part where Noel is going to step in and tell me that I misspoke. One of the, one of, we have, over the past two, three, four years, Gilbert and Andrew and our firm have periodically decided to take a look at refinancing the Series two thousand nine BABS. They were a great, it was a great benefit at the time that we did the Series two thousand nine BABS because the city was getting that subsidy, uh, that helped to, to reduce the overall carrying cost or interest costs on those bonds. However, uh, that subsidy does not come without some level of risk. And that, that risk is that, uh, over time, the federal government actually, uh, has taken steps to reduce that subsidy, uh, to some level. Originally, the subsidy was approximately thirty-five percent of the annual interest cost. That subsidy has now been, through sequestration, decreased to about thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent on the, on the existing bonds. And so periodically, we have looked at, like, what if we were to refinance these things? And if you refinance the BABS, then the federal government subsidy, uh, is eliminated and go away. So, you've got to be able to generate enough cash flow savings or interest cost savings from that refinancing to offset the loss of that BAB subsidy. And for the past three or four years, the numbers wouldn't add up. Okay, we, we, if we, if we did the refinancing, uh, y- you wouldn't save enough money to, to make up for that lost BAB subsidy. Well, as part of this, uh, tax reform legislation, um, because it may trigger other bills that have been enacted, specifically a Pago Act in two thousand ten, which basically kicked it, kicks in if the federal government enacts, uh, some legislation that increases the federal deficit over a ten-year period, which right now, the OMB is projecting that this tax reform bill would do, then the Pago Act kicks in. And that will, uh, give the, the federal government the, it would basically freeze the BAB payments or eliminate, uh, the payment of the BAB subsidy. So, as part of our, as, and Noel, uh, Noel and I, uh, Noel called me last week and said, "Hey, we need to be discussing this" because we'd all been discussing this advanced refunding elimination. But folks had not yet, uh, focused on, uh, this, this kind of other trigger that could really impact the BAB subsidy. So, uh, we got in contact with Gilbert and Andrew quickly to look at this and ran the analysis and said, "You know what? Maybe the BAB subsidy could go away if all this is enacted. And if it goes away, could we refinance these bonds and generate enough savings to offset the loss?" And the punchline of section two is that, based upon current economic conditions in the tax-exempt municipal bond market, we believe that we could generate enough savings to refinance, uh, all of the BABS and, and overcome the loss of the BAB subsidy. So, if you'll look, uh, on page number seven inside section two, what you'll see down at the bottom, uh, is kind of a, a spreadsheet that contains the cash flows of the, of the analysis. What we're looking at is, is refinancing twenty-three million, five thousand dollars of those Series two thousand nine B BABS. Those bonds have an interest rate that, that ranges from four point four-nine percent to six point one-two-four percent. Um, and if you'll, and if you'll look with me in column C of, of page seven, column C is the current estimated BAB subsidy that the city would receive over the remaining life of these, of these Build America bonds. Current, currently estimated at about three point four-two-two million dollars over the remaining life of those bonds. And if you look at column E, column E is the estimated savings right now if we were to refinance these bonds with, with tax-exempt geo-refunding bonds. And so what you'll see there is the savings, the cash flow stream here, they basically mirror one another. We're able to eliminate that BAB subsidy and, and not have the city impacted by losing the sub- subsidy because we'd be lowering the overall interest cost to the city. And we got to talking about this. This four hundred thousand dollars per year in subsidy amounts to over one penny of additional INS tax rate that we could potentially be facing if we lost, if we lost that subsidy. So, the reason to come before council tonight is to seek to move forward with refinancing these geo-bonds, this, this, this BAB, and, and get it priced and closed before the end of two thousand seventeen because of that sa- those same provisions we talked about related to the utility system bonds, about eliminating advanced refunding bonds on a tax-exempt basis, also kick in here and would impact, impact our abilities here to refinance these. So, that's the reason we're coming to you tonight and hoping to get authority to move forward. Once we get that authority, we'll run through kind of the same steps we've done with the utility system. Get it, get a geo-rating in place and get to the market to lock in the interest rates on the, on the new refunding bonds and, and hopefully continue to mirror this, uh, this savings and effectively, uh, eliminate the city's risk that the BAB subsidy goes away. We're ba- basically getting out of, out of that business, so. It's been a good program for the city for seven, eight, nine years, and it's, it's one of those deals, maybe you take your gains and, and, and walk away and, and, uh, you're on your own at that point.
Two reasons to refi them now.
You got it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? I s- I said a lot. Noel hasn't thrown anything at me yet, so. But, uh, any questions you may have, please let us know.
No, thank you. Good job for keeping an eye on that, counsel.
Dusty.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say we're going to get rid of the BABS, does that mean when you re, uh, refund or refinance, uh, this particular BABS, it's going to go into another type of?
That's a, that's a great question. The BABS are currently outstanding as certificates of obligation, Series two thousand nine B. That's a tax. That's a taxable bond, actually. And so when we complete this refunding, the city will actually issue general obligation refunding bond, Series 2017. And those refunding bonds will pay off the existing BABS.
Right.
And then be outstanding in their place.
Okay.
And they'll be tax exempt.
Well, they'll be tax exempt, that's one thing I wanted to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, on page four, when we were talking about refinancing these, is it going to be like another line item on here? It's not going to be a utility system revenue bond?
No, ma'am.
It's just going to be?
It will be, it'll be a GEO, general obligation refunding bond.
Okay. So it's going to be treated as two separate bonds?
They will be treated as two separate bonds. That's correct. Bondholders, the utility system revenue bonds are outstanding and the bondholders' security for those bonds is the net revenues of the city's utility system. The general obligation bonds, the bondholder's security for those is the ad valorem taxes that are levied by the city.
Okay. And just if anybody watching is curious, I don't know if you said it, BABS is Build America bonds.
Thank you. Build America bonds. That's right.
That would drive me crazy if I didn't know.
Part of some of the stimulus legislation that came out during the recession.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? All right, staff, or thank you, Dusty, for being here. Now, we'll need to, we have a motion and a second on C4.
We have a motion to approve C4, which.
And Noel? He's got to earn his.
I do, you know, I came all the way to the city. I'm always glad to be at the city. I definitely want to speak at the city. Noel Valdez with the law firm of McCall, Parker, and Horton. I do want to say one thing. You have two transactions that you're considering. One has already been priced, as Dusty just mentioned to you. That was out in the market yesterday. I know that your document still reads as if you're delegating authority to the mayor or the city manager to approve final terms at a later date, but that later date's actually going to be today. So I have certificates already filled out with the pricing information for the utility system revenue bonds. The same information that Dusty gave you are in those certificates that the mayor will execute tonight. The reason we set it up as a delegation was because we wanted to give the city the ultimate flexibility. In case we couldn't price yesterday, you know, the city would have the ability to price here in the next few coming weeks. Now, the general obligation refunding bonds, the refunding of the BABS, that one is a true delegation. That one has not been priced. I will be priced here in the next week or so, and Dusty and Steph are preparing for that pricing. When that pricing occurs, I will then be coming to the city manager, the mayor, with those certificates to be executed.
What are the criteria that you use or how do you decide which ones to put out? Like you said, you've got the ones that you've just now done. How do you figure out which ones to do?
So we're regularly running a model. We've got software where we're able to kind of run a model using current market interest rates and looking at the city's existing outstanding bond portfolio and looking to see if, based on current market conditions, it creates a savings to refinance those bonds. And periodically, it does make sense for some of the city's bonds to be refinanced for conditions that are specifically related to that particular series of bonds. Maybe their interest rates are a little bit higher, maybe their call dates closer and things like that. So we're periodically doing that monitoring based upon current market conditions. And we typically want to make sure that before we have the city jump through the hoops to issue the refinancing bonds, that the savings threshold would meet, say, at least a 2.5% to 3% savings at minimum. So it is worth the city's time to jump through the hoops to consider the refinancing. But that's something that's ongoing periodic update that we're doing. Does that answer your question?
Is that a long way to say market conditions?
It is a long way to say market conditions.
Day-to-day change and you watch them, yeah.
Certainly. That's correct.
Okay. Good. Thanks for being so thorough in being here tonight, both of y'all. So where are we?
We have a motion and a second to approve item C4, which is the general obligation refunding bonds. Those are the BABS bonds.
Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. And then we've already had a public hearing on C5.
Yes, we have.
So I'll entertain a motion there.
Make a motion to approve C5?
Second.
Motion, second. I assume there's no further discussion on that either. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are on our consent agenda. We'll do one, two, five, and six, and then do three and four separate.
Sounds good.
Right?
Item one on the consent agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of November 7th, 2017. Item two is the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant, programmatic agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Victoria, Texas regarding a public facilities remodel and upgrade project for the Boys and Girls Club building for $120,000 and declaring an effective date. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal cooperation contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety for the use of certain of their law enforcement-related forms, publications, and other supplies and declaring an effective date. And then item six is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2001-19 of the City of Victoria, Texas, which ordained the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303 of the Texas Government Code, to extend additional incentives for qualified businesses under said program nominating the city of, excuse me, nominating the Victoria of Texas Limited Partnership Doing Businesses Ditar Healthcare Center project in the city as an enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, including procedural provisions and declaring an effective date.
Counsel.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, let's do D3 now.
D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with SAP Public Services for the annual license and maintenance agreement for software used by finance, purchasing, and human resources in the amount of $52,618.26 and declaring an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Only question I had is, this is a year-to-year agreement now? We didn't have like a five-year agreement before or?
No, ma'am. It's an annually renewable maintenance agreement. This one actually dates back to 2012, which was the last time we upgraded.
Because I was thinking maybe we had gotten an agreement from 12 to 17, and now we're renewing for 18.
No, it's annually, we bring this to council every year, so it's paid annually.
Okay. That's good.
It is the same amount since 2012, too, so I have to point that out.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. D4.
D4 is a resolution approving the purchase of replacement sets of firefighting structural protective clothing from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated in the amount of $44,550, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this purchase and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, second. Question?
Is this the second year? If I remember correctly, we did 20 of these last year, these sets?
Yes, we try to do about 20 every year. Probably what you're thinking is, we had to do an emergency order last year after one of our fires. We got a lot of our gear damaged, so we kind of got off cycle with just that gear that we ended up getting reimbursed on an insurance claim. And so, but yeah, we try to order between 18 to 20 sets each year.
Okay. But is this year two, so we still have?
Well, it's just ongoing.
Okay.
You know, we have about 120 people in gear, and the gear only lasts about five to six years. By law, we have to pull it out after 10 or before 10.
So by the time these go, you know, you have to go keep going. Okay. I was just wondering if it was just, you know.
It's just an ongoing, by spreading it out like this, instead of bringing one large purchase every five or six years, it allows us to spread it out over, just over time.
We never get a break. We're buying gear every year.
Right.
And they, so you're replacing them every year for the ones that were, so they have like, kind of like a shelf life that they can't, you know?
Yeah. By the Texas Fire Commission's regulations, none of our gear can be used past 10 years.
Okay.
And so typically at about the five to six-year mark, we're starting to see significant wear and tear. And some of our gear, we make it all the way to now. We don't just buy 20 sets. We actually go out and evaluate all the gear each year to determine, you know, what needs to be replaced and what can wait.
That's good. No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. So we're in section E, E1.
E1 is a resolution appointing one new member to fill a vacancy and reappointing two current members to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors and declaring an effective date. Mayor, council, as we've done before, I have ballots prepared to fill in the blank on this resolution. There are three names in the blanks. Those are the names that have previously submitted applications. And there is additional blanks at the bottom in case you choose to write in an additional candidate. If you'll put a number one at the top and sign your name, I'll remind the general public that we don't do secret ballots. These ballots are available to the public. They are saved with the city secretary's office. This is just a convenient way for us to manage the process.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor and council, because we have one absent member, we have the potential for a tie vote, and it actually just occurred. We have three votes for Will Armstrong and three votes for Richard Janeca. Mayor, that leads us to a bit of a deadlock.
We'll put it to the next meeting.
You want to push it off to the next?
Is anybody going to be, well, absent next meeting? I'll be here. What are you grinning about?
Because I was, but that's okay.
Are you?
No, no. It's not the, it's the first one in December, no. It's the second one that I might be on.
Anybody want to flip a coin?
It is provided in the elections code that you can settle disputes by casting lots.
What do you want to do? Want to wait? It's, we're not even going to have a meeting till when? When's the next, the sales tax meeting?
December. They could potentially have a meeting in December, but it's unlikely. It'll probably be January when the annual meeting is when we swear in new officers.
We've been having the meetings without Chris for a long time, so I don't think it matters. I think we should wait.
And the appointments are good through the end of the year.
That's correct.
I mean, so Ms. Solis and Mr. Knight still serve until, you know?
Yeah.
Procedurally, what do you need from us? Table?
Table. Until the next meeting?
Do we have a motion and a table on this, a motion and a second on this item already?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have it marked.
We did not.
We just did.
We didn't have a name, so we didn't have anything to vote on.
If we don't have a motion and a second, we don't need any procedural activity.
Put it on the next.
We just simply don't take this up at all, and we put it off to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I'm going to vote different next time, just to, I'm kidding, I'm sorry. E2.
All right. E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an education affiliation agreement with Victoria College for the benefit of allowing EMT and paramedic students from Victoria College the opportunity to ride in the fire department ambulances for medical training purposes and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The agreement says it started August 1st, 2017, to July 31st, 2022. So are we already writing or, because this becomes effective once you sign it. So are we writing or are we waiting?
They've been writing for a long time. I mean, this is an ongoing, I don't know how many years we've had this agreement with VC.
This agreement changed pretty significantly. So they had to bounce back and forth between the college and the city, you know, to get it right. But we never stopped the students from being able to ride.
So is this a renewal then? Kind of, sort of?
What, the way the, the way the agreement had been set up is we had to do it every year. So we're trying to move to more, just, let's just do this for five years out.
Okay.
I mean, we've got a great relationship with the college, and so it's a very necessary thing they need for their EMTs and paramedic students.
Is this tied to this college's school year? The August 1st date looks like it would be?
That was just what the dean had put in when they mailed it to us before we started doing the changes. So some of the language had to be adjusted because it wasn't quite right and so, but it very well may, could be.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. E3?
E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts of sale offered for the city property that meets specific criteria, further conditioned upon final approval of that sale by city council, and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay.
So all we're saying is that they are going to be paying for the escrow, the appraisal, and what, the closing costs? So it doesn't come out of our pocket?
That's correct.
Okay.
No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. E4?
E4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Easy Go, a division of Textron Incorporated, for golf carts for Riverside Golf Course in the amount of $4,308.50 per month for 60 months and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve E4.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Questions? I see Colby's there.
Ask some questions. This is the latest and greatest model. It sounds like the Elite with the lithium ion batteries. What's the price for leasing just a standard battery golf cart?
It's about $6 a month less.
Okay. And how many rounds a month do we have to have to break even?
Depending on what the average cost of the round would be, I would have to calculate that, Mr. Bocknight. What my choice was here was that the cart is almost 300 pounds lighter, the factor that we will have zero battery maintenance, which will save us about 250 man-hours per year. That's what we looked at, you know, as far as the differences in the cost there. I didn't go into the amount of rounds that we have. I know that the golf cart, you know, compared to a acid battery cart, price-wise, you're looking about, over the course of the five years, about an $18,000 difference in the lease. When you extrapolate that out in the man-hours that we have, we would have to put into the lead battery acid, it's going to cost us roughly about $13,000 in man-hours. So it's, you know, about a $6,000 difference when you take out a full five-year lease on a lead acid versus the lithium.
Okay. But we don't know how many rounds we need each month to break even on this lease?
Yes, sir. I mean, I could, I could run those numbers. It's not something I have in front of me right now to be able to give you.
And we need 50 at a time? We need 50 carts out there?
Well, we brought that down from the original lease was 60 carts was what VP I had there. When myself and the golf pro went through and started talking, okay, do we need 60 carts? What are the sizes of that? We figured that, you know, on an average tournament, 100-person tournament would be a very nice tournament for Riverside. And so we went to that we could use 50 carts for that. If we ever got to the point where we needed additional carts for a larger tournament, which may be two or three times a year, that is something that we could go out and rent like we do for the Christmas on the square where we rent carts for staff to go around or boot fest. So we actually brought that number down.
Okay.
Do you have an idea what we're going to be charging for the cart rental? Per round? Is it per round or is it per month or?
It's included in the per round cost. It's how we're doing that.
Including the round cost.
You need these for opening in January?
We do.
Yeah. Okay. You still on target for January then?
Yes.
Assuming you get these and everything else in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, I'm just trying to understand the 50, you know, you got to force them on each each hole, that's 36. Leaves you with 14 more.
You're going to base that off of, off of your normal, you know, a normal tournament that you would want to draw in is, you know, 100 players, uh, right around there. You're also going to have the rotation of the carts that, that in the morning you send out, out groups that go in. Those carts come in, need to recharge for the afternoon group. So you have the, they will be rotated through a, a series as they're being used. And so, yes, you might be able to get away to say, okay, we only need, you know, 45 carts or 40 carts, but then you're not, you don't have that flexibility once you get busy or slow to, to rotate those to recharge for the second round that they, they would have to do if you limited it to just, you know, 36 or 40 carts.
Don't some of the people that play at the golf si- uh, the Riverside have their own carts?
We have 34. 34 private carts is what's leased right now.
What's out there right now, so?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're adding another 50.
Well, you do end up with more than a foursome on a hole. There are people on the tee box and then they're waiting on the people that are on a hole.
Of course, when you talk about the rotation, are they going to be using some of these carts too? The people that have their own?
Ms. Solis, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if an individual would come and use those or not. If you have your own cart, you, you may keep it out of our, out at one of the sheds. Now, we will not allow carts that would come in individually. They would have to be part of our annual pass type of program that have rented a shed at our facility. And so if you had a private cart that you were, you were renting one of the sheds at our facility, then you could use that on the course. But if you were just driving in from out of town, you would, you would, your green fee would include the price of a cart. Does that make sense to you?
Well, that's why I was asking, because you said that the price of the cart for the rental fee is inside of the fee for, for them to play. So the individual that has their own cart is not going to be charged a rental fee because it's not in, built into his, uh?
I, I was referring to the daily fee for if you just come up and play and don't have a private cart shed.
Oh, okay.
We will be charging though, a trail fee for those that have the private cart sheds. But this is, what's built into that daily rate is those that don't have a cart shed.
And then what were the competing bids like?
When we looked at, at Easy Go Club Car Yamaha, they were all within each other of 50 cents or so per month on the lead acid battery. The lithium battery one, Easy Go is the only one that has that technology at the time. And, and so that's where we went. We did take a look at, at the lead acid batteries from three different companies, and they're very similar, uh, the carts. There's not much difference in the tech, in technology of, of those three. And so we, we felt like with the, with the weight that we, the, the cart being less weight and the fact that it's more efficient, the, the lithium battery is warranted for five years, we felt like that was a better purchase for the city than going with a lead bat- lead acid battery.
And what are the backout provisions from the city's perspective if we can't make a go of this golf cart, golf course?
I would have to get you an answer to that.
What's the penalty for breaking the lease?
I'd have to get you an answer to that, Mr. Bocknight.
Because if we find that we can't run this golf course without having to sink a bunch of money in it every year, I'd like to know what, what, how do we break the lease and, you know?
Nobody have an answer for that one?
I guess we don't have the lease yet because we haven't approved the concept yet.
Any?
Yeah, can we use, can we use these golf carts for Christmas on the square and for Boot Fest also?
We'd have to take a look at play. These golf carts are going to be for the golf course. If, if, if it warrants it, then that's something that we may be able to do. It just depends. I couldn't promise it right now, but.
Make sure that's in the lease.
Oh, they, they will be under our supervision to be able to use. So should we need to use them for something event and the golf course cannot allow it, then yes, we could.
We're hoping the golf course is busy and there's not availability.
Is there the potential of a lease that's not five years? That's two years or three years?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That is something that you could do. It's just going to increase the, the monthly cost, um, just financing a truck for two years versus five years or six years, whatever that may be. It's, it's just a different payment larger.
And are we still getting on the next meeting, the business plan for the golf course?
I don't know if we'll have it ready for the next meeting. We, um, we first drafted last week, going back, working on it. And then I would like for Michael at Foresight to look at it to make sure we're not missing something in that business plan while they're still under contract.
But yeah, we feel confident in the, these next two items, that we don't have a business plan to back it up yet.
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to open the golf course, we need these two things to do, so.
And I would argue that if we're going to open the golf course, we need a business plan.
Well, I, if I remember from conversation last week, we have a business plan. It may not be on a-
It may be presented next meeting. We were told.
Well, we've put it off to give them a little more time, didn't we?
Yes, we put it off from this meeting to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, there is no way we could get it wrapped up in two weeks.
Can these two items wait till we have that business plan or?
You're going to delay the opening?
We're not going to be able to open in January.
What day in January are you talking about?
I'm sorry.
Which day in January?
That first weekend in January was our goal to open up.
I'm not sure what the fascination with the golf course is lately, council. I mean, we, we have staff. It's okay for the questions, but we either trust them or we don't. I know Colby's run a course before. I don't have any problem with sharing a business plan. I never thought that was a bad idea, Mr. Bocknight. But we're either going to do this course or not. I, I, I had no inclination that there was some desire not to open this course on time. I mean, it's going to be risk associated with it. I don't know a year from now if there'll be enough rounds to, how much of the cost will recover. And I don't know how much it'll be two years from now, but, you know, we have, as a group have committed to reopening this course. Delay, this is delays to me. I don't.
The way I see it, I can't make a decision. It's 50 carts, the right number. What are we expecting for rounds per day? What are we expecting for, you know, tournament play? Are we expecting to do one tournament a month where it'd make better sense to lease just for that one tournament if you get more than 100 in the tournament?
I think some of those things are fluid and they will change over the years as the course is open, we see the response to it. I mean, I'm, you know, I have never run a golf course. I don't play golf. Maybe that's the difference here. I don't know if you guys play golf. You might have more knowledge of it, Mr. Bocknight. Jeff, you do?
I've played golf, I'm a member of M G A. I've been the president over there at Victoria Country Club. I have looked at the finances in great detail of a golf course. It takes a lot to run a golf course. And I'm, I'm just, I want to open this golf course, but I want to make sure that we have a solid plan going forward.
That's not necessarily a bad thing at all, Jeff. I would encourage you to meet with staff ahead of time so that we don't slow this whole process down. You do have a lot of knowledge of golf courses, so sit down with Colby and Charmel and work through that. And I'm sure you can provide some great, great input.
I would love to have a plan so I could sit down and go through it with them.
I, I know that we've seen some numbers. And I think what you're looking for is how we're going to be relevant, how we're going to be different, how we're going to compete, because we've already seen numbers. And so I think that's-
I'm not looking for a marketing plan, Ms. Scott. I'm looking for a business plan. How are you going to meet those numbers? All the background that goes into that.
Okay.
I have a question. What about if we went like, instead of five years, could we go two years? That way, you know, we can look at it, because the penalties for canceling out on these leases might be more than, you know, than what do, if we're losing money and then we're going to cancel and they're still going to charge us a fee for canceling these leases. We need to find out what the penalty's going to be. I would be, you know, for two years, I think I would, that'd give us two years to be able to, to see how it works.
Ms. Solis, with, with, if you were talking this next item that's on the agenda with the, the mowing equipment, then as far as, okay, we want to finance that for two years, I wouldn't see an issue with that because the pieces of that equipment, we will keep longer than the five-year lease. When you start talking about a golf cart, you know, once they start, they start declining in that, that's not a purchase that normal, a normal golf course is going to keep over a 10-year time period. And so on a golf cart, you will continually be running leases to, to keep your golf fleet current and keep it, 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 you know, current with it. So to be able to do that, you would need to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to lease this for two years payments, but then we're going to, we're going to still keep it for five, you know, for five years. It would just be, then you would need to go in, I would recommend going into a purchase of those carts, but then you don't have the ability to turn them back in. So the problem that you set yourself up with is after five years, you're not replacing them, then your fleet quality goes down and that can be reflected on the course.
So you can't get a two-year lease?
We sure, we sure can. There's, there's no problem with, with a two-year lease. It would just be that in two years, you're going to be replacing that fleet, turning it over in two years, where you haven't, you, you, you've just gotten into the, the healthy part of the li- of the, of the, that you're, you're starting to make money back on it. Is that, am I?
Well, I thought if, if you were going to lease it and you turn it back in and then you have early termination, there's going to be some fees involved. Whereas if you renewed it in two years, was to say that you can't get newer carts or, isn't that the way a lease works?
Is what he's saying is the new lease would be at a, probably at a higher rate.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. If you wanted to do, do your terms, I can, I can get them.
By then, we have two years of experience in running a golf course and you've built, you know, you know where you can cut corners or you know where you can spend more money. So give yourself the two years to work it out instead of five years. And we got, we got, uh, uh, terms and conditions on this leases that we have to meet whether we're making money or not.
Well, and I'd like to just remind council too, I think we did a budget estimate on 23,000 rounds a year. If, I don't have that number, was it 23? Do you remember? Or 22,000 rounds a year?
I think it's 23.
We're doing our best estimate on those rounds per year at this point. The numbers from V P I weren't real good numbers for us to make an estimate and the, and the golf course has been closed now for several months. So we're going to have to rebuild the golfing business back up for Riverside. So when we're doing these estimates, it's based on what we believe we can do in a rounds per year. So, and that's not necessarily to your lease, it's just to some of the general comments about, you know, the golf course in general.
Can, can we consider moving forward with what we have and maybe just require or condition the cotton, the lease to have some type of an early termination provision that allows us to terminate, say, after two years and, and negotiate what that price is, which would give us the best of both worlds. It would give us the reduced rate for the five-year, but also ask them about some types of termination early. And then also challenge all the golfers in the city of Victoria if, if they're interested in, in the course, making it to get out there that first weekend, the second weekend, get out there and play and, and show that, that there is support for this course and continue on.
I would put out that if we're going to do a two-year lease, then we do the lead batteries versus the lithium, because I don't think you're going to get the benefit in a two-year. It's going to be cheaper for the two-year and then figure out from a historical data standpoint before you go and put a, a more efficient but more expensive cart before looking for historical data.
At this point, if, is there any further comments? I don't want to cut anyone off. What we'll do is we'll vote. You know, I would, well, let's just vote first if there's nothing else. Anybody got anything else? Don't want to stifle anything.
I'm just going to abstain from a vote till I get some information as far as a business plan, really.
Okay.
I think it'll all be in there.
Okay. So, you know, and it's safe to say if it doesn't pass, we'll get, we'll get back around to this. If it does, we'll move forward. That's as simple as that and it's okay.
Okay, but we're voting on it as it is with a five-year contract?
And I don't-
Unless we amend it or we don't amend it?
Ms. Scott, I don't know that we could facilitate that, what you're asking. We don't have it, the lease, we're, we're putting pre-
Right.
-conditions on it. I don't know, can we? I don't think we can.
If council were to make a motion to add that condition, legally that becomes a counter offer back to the, the person who's offering us this lease. They're not obligated to accept that condition, but we would not be renting the golf courses unless they did agree to it.
Could cost a lot more money, I guess.
I was also going to comment on the, I think these other batteries, the lithium ones, says they're 279 pounds lighter. I know my husband always fusses at me when I run the lawnmower over the sprinkler heads. And, you know, that's one of the things that golf carts are notorious for doing.
Colby mentioned that, about how much lighter they were.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, so we won't consider, you did not motion to amend or anything, let's just, okay, that was discussion. Okay. Well, we'll take a vote. Let's do, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Three, all those opposed, same sign, raise, raise your right hand. That's three, two. Is that enough?
Yes.
Okay. That item passes. Next, where are we at? Which one?
We're at E five.
E five.
E five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease purchase agreement with professional turf products for turf equipment package in the amount of $7,790.76 per month and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on E five. Questions?
Thanks, thanks. What are the backout provisions?
Is this equipment you already have? Is this a renewal?
No, sir. This would be a, a lease purchase equipment for new equipment to come in. The stuff that we have is, is being basically rented on a month-to-month basis until December 31st.
Okay, that was the short-term stuff to get, that we can take care of things.
In June or July somewhere.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Okay, you said this equipment is already here?
No, ma'am. We have equipment that back in, I think it was June, if my memory serves me, that council, when we first took over the course, we did a short-term lease for six months. This will replace that equipment.
So this is going to be brand-new equipment? They're not going to leave you with that other equipment and then add to it?
Correct, this will be, this will be brand-new.
So if I read that this is the contract right here and it just takes a signature, then there is no penalty for getting out of this early?
There is a restocking fee. Restocking, refurbishing, usage and shipping fees if we return the equipment to them.
That answer your question? Okay, okay. I mean, if we're going to have a golf course, we got to mow it. I, I don't, and again, I know this is specialized equipment. I wouldn't be able to say what, you know, I'm trusting your judgment, this is what you need, take care of it, so. Any further questions? We'll, we'll, we'll raise our right hands again. And all those in favor, raise your right hand? That's four. And all those against, raise your right hand? Okay.
I'm just against a five years, that's all.
Okay. So that E five passes. E six.
E six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation from the Victoria 100 Club in the amount up to $14,000 for technology acquisitions and upgrades for use by the Victoria Police Department and declaring an effective date. Victoria Police Department and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Motion second. See, we have Ms. Peggy Cunningham here. I didn't recognize her earlier, but I just wanna thank her for her running the 100 Club.
May I have her come up here?
Absolutely.
Judge?
Absolutely.
Mayor, counsel.
What'd you call me?
I did, I called you. I should.
It doesn't matter. How are you, ma'am?
I'm great. How are y'all? It's a great honor to be here tonight and tell y'all what a wonderful, wonderful group of first responders that you have in Victoria. And as a member of the 100 Club, I'm very proud to bring checks tonight to both the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief. And we'll have others, but y'all won't have to approve those. But thank you so much. And I wanna thank the first responders again. And we had the meet and greet and some of the council members were out there. And I thought it was a great event. Attendance was down, but we had to change the date, but we're gonna do it again. But we really, it's been one of the greatest joys of my life to serve on the board of the 100 Club of what they do. We can't say thank you often enough to our first responders. And thank you, City Council, for taking good care of them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cunningham. We appreciate you. Okay.
She's had enough. I would just say that I'll, I would, I'd like to point out that they have been very strong, though Victoria 100 Club has been very strong supporters of public safety in Victoria. And I can't thank them enough for stepping up the way they have, you know, time and time again to assist us in our efforts. So, thank you.
Just remember, all you have to do is ask.
All we have to do is ask. Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Counsel, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay. Number seven.
E7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality $111,664.67 for the annual consolidated water quality assessment fee for the city's wastewater treatment plants and declaring an effective date.
Counsel, move, re-adopt?
Second.
We have to pay this one.
We do. That's what I was gonna ask.
We have to.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
This, the one for a hundred, or $77,000, that's for the new sewer plant, the new wastewater plant?
No, ma'am. The seventy.
Seven thousand?
Yeah. The seventy-seven is for the regional plant, the larger of the two plants. The thirty-four is the smaller, smaller of the two plants, the new and the Odom Street.
Oh, okay. Just wondering.
Okay. Expensive fees. Gotta do it. No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, ayes have it. Number eight.
It is a resolution approving the purchase of various parts and labor required to repair the Ashbrook Belt Filter Press located at the Regional Surface Water Treatment Plant from Alpha Laval Incorporated in the amount of $27,500, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second. Questions, discussion?
Was this the one we repaired a couple of years ago, or is this a different roller?
This is probably the one that we repaired a couple of years ago. I'm not 100% sure about that, but I know this machine has been repaired within the last probably two to five years. This is a machine that's the, the newer of the two and it gets used the most, so it has the most wear and tear on it. The other machine is, is very old.
And we have that to be replaced?
We have that to be, this, we're working on the design right now and hope to have that replaced in this fiscal year. That was actually.
And on that capital improvements project list?
Yes, it was actually on the FY 17, and we moved it to 18, because we just couldn't get the design done in time. It's a very complicated design trying to fit a new machine in that, in that old building.
It's a dirty job.
It is very dirty job.
Get Micro to come help do that. It's dirty jobs.
It's a dirty job.
Interesting, okay. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. Number nine.
E9 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Victoria Engineering Incorporated, doing businesses urban engineering for engineering services for utility relocations for the US, US Highway 59 North Frontage Road Phase Two project in the amount of $35,000 and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
My motion is second. Any questions on this one?
Donald, I'd like for you to explain this. This is something you haven't seen. It's, it's a new project.
Sure. If you'll remember, Texas Department of Transportation just finished, completed a project out on US 59 where they changed the frontage roads. And they're making this, this US 59, a corridor, an I-69 corridor. That was phase one in our area. Phase two is what we're showing you here, where they're going to do a project to do, extend those frontage roads from Loop 463 out towards Telfner, just past, just past Telfner. What you're, what you have in front of you is the, the city's portion of the design to move our existing utilities that are in conflict with some of the work that they're doing. It may be putting in, expanding the roadway, or it could be changing the drainage. A lot of times when you reshape and cut new ditches, you're going to end up getting into our water and sewer lines. So this $35,000 is to have Urban Engineering survey that area and come up with the design. We will then take that design and put it into TechDOT's engineers' contract or, or design, and their contractor will, will do the work and be in charge of inspecting it. Of course, we will have an inspector out there as well.
So that's gonna be a TechDOT project, not ours?
It, it'd be kind of a partnership. But yes, overall, it'll be a TechDOT project. It's being driven by a TechDOT project. Otherwise, we would not be doing this.
All we're doing is moving our utilities.
We're just moving any.
They're responsible for the roadwork and everything. We're just moving our utilities.
Yeah.
And we are going to not do the water tower number six to be able to do this, right?
That's, that's correct. We anticipate the actual construction portion of our, of our, moving our conflicting water and wastewater lines to be around $500,000. We won't know that for sure until we get, till TechDOT bids and awards. But in order to cover that, should the project go forward, we recommend putting off the rehab of water tower six for, for another year.
Okay.
This is a fast-track project for TechDOT.
Absolutely. Yeah, this project, while it was on the horizon, we, we didn't, it wasn't a for-sure thing when we were doing the budget for fiscal year 18, 2018.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay. So we're in our city manager reports now. April?
I believe all three. All three of those are mine. The first one is concerning the Building and Standards Commission. Six of those members would like to be reappointed, and one member is not at this time wishing to be reappointed. The current members that wish to be reappointed are Nick Kenojosa, Raleigh McCoy, Eric Mercer, Sherry Strickland, Bobby Thomas, and Victor Marshall. Mr. Cade, Harold Cade is, does not wish to be reappointed at this time. We did have one application submitted for Mr. Robert Brooks that wished to serve on that board. So if the council is agreeable, we'll bring back the resolution at the next meeting with those names.
Okay.
And the next one is for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. As you may remember, this board is composed of specific members based on licensing and district representation. Three of the district representatives need to be reappointed. Mr. Michael Atkinson, who currently serves as District Two Representative, Mr. Philip Schrader, who serves as District Three Representative, and Richard Janeca, who serves as Richard Four, as District Four Representative. And I did ask the three council members serving in those areas if they wish to have these people reappointed, and they were agreeable to that. So. And the last one is a report to consider appointments to the Parks Commission. The three members who currently serve, whose appointments are expiring are Mr. Lee Keeling, Mike Rivera, and Gal Repka. They do wish to be reappointed, but we also have four additional applications that were submitted for appointment from Jesse Olivares and Tenacio Trevino, which I believe is Tenacio Trevino. Mr. Eric Leonard and Helen Walker have all submitted applications. So we can do a resolution again with the blank where we do our voting at the next council member, at the meeting to consider who to appoint for those positions.
Okay. So you'll bring all that back?
Yes, sir.
And if anyone wants, counsel, encourage other people to apply, go see April. So, very good. Okay, we have an executive session, very brief. We'll go next door here and come out.
Sure. The City Council will recess for executive session on the 21st day of November 2017 at 6:37 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Okay, I forgot something. Mr. Novasad has been sitting back there and was gonna update us on something. Is it acceptable to do that now?
Absolutely.
Counsel, if you don't mind, is that okay, or would y'all rather wait?
This is essentially an item from counsel.
It was under item, I had such a long list under item from counsel, and I can't believe I didn't see that. So come on up, and he wants to update us one, one really cool thing he's doing. And then we'll go to executive session. I'm so sorry.
Thank you for your time, counsel. I'll make this very quick. OC's gonna help me real quick here, Aspel.
We don't have to go do three pictures to get these shirts?
No, no.
So Councilman Young played Billy Idol in a play the other day, and he, he looked the part.
Impersonator.
Impersonator. That's what that reference was about.
He was impersonating an impersonator.
Thank you. Yeah, very good.
Again, thank you for your time, counsel. What you have there is a T-shirt through a new promotion with the Victoria Convention and Visitors Bureau. It is our historic Victoria Texas History Trail, following sort of the same footsteps of the Great Coastal Texas Barbecue Trail, which was a very massive, great success for us, launched in 2015. The concept of the trail, like with the barbecue trail, where you would go visit three barbecue joints, get three receipts, and bring them to our visitor's center to get your free T-shirt. With the historic Victoria Texas History Trail, you can visit one of 10 locations on the trail. That includes the Museum of the Coastal Bend, the Victoria Trail Through Time Historic Interpretive Displays, the Street of Ten Friends Historic Sign, the DeLeon Plaza Bandstand, Six Flags, DeLeon's Monument, the Rosebud Fountain and Grill, Fasadi's Deli, the Victoria Art League Building, the courthouse, the NAY Museum, and the Pump House Riverside Restaurant and Bar. Now, this information is all available on a dedicated website, historicvictoriatexas.com. And what we do is encourage visitors to Victoria, people visiting family or, you know, here on vacation, to go visit at least three of those locations, take a photo, a selfie, upload it to their Facebook, tag Explore Victoria Texas, or, yes, thank you, mayor, and if, a very, very nice, sharp-looking shirt specially designed for this trail. And for those who are, you know, not comfortable using social media, not, you know, really inclined to take pictures with their phones or anything like that, they can just visit three of those locations, come to a visitor's center and tell us about their experience. And it's just a great way to pool some of our smaller assets in tourism to create a, a larger product similar to what we did with the barbecue trail. And, you know, it, it is something that we, you know, has an indefinite timeline. It's not, you know, we get questions still, is barbecue trail over and absolutely not. So just another thing to add to our, our tourism portfolio. So be happy to answer any questions at any time, at this time.
Really neat, really neat. So they just gotta take those pictures and show up at your office to get a shirt?
Absolutely.
I had some, a friend run out and do that right away, the same day y'all did the little tour with.
Did Broad Street Live, Broad Street Live.
Broad Street Live, South Broad Street Live.
Ingrid Sparkman and myself traveled around the trail and, and put some videos up. It was a great time.
Good thinking. Good job. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Novasad. All right, we'll, we'll go to executive session right in here for a few minutes.